I now, I now call order the meeting of the School Board Independent School District 624. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Arcan.
Here.
Daniels, here. Ellison.
Here.
Scar.
Here.
Strife Oji.
Here.
All right, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Ms. Ellison. Do we get a second?
Second.
Second by Strife Oji. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. This will be a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We also have a consent agenda. This contains a variety of business items that comes to us monthly, including donations. We're always truly grateful for the support shown every month to our staff and students. We want to say thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, by Ms. Daniels, second?
Second.
Ms. Strife Oji, is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Sorry, Arcan?
Here, aye.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Okay, now we have an agenda in front of us. Nobody requested to speak for the public forum, so we will not have that tonight. That will take us to C1, Student Recognition. Dr. Kazmicek.
All right, thank you Chair Arcan. Tonight, we proudly celebrate the achievements earned by students in Scholastic Art Awards, VFW Auxiliary Young American Creative Patriotic Art Contest, All-State Band Choir and Orchestra, Panopin Theater Trust Triple Threat, Boys and Girls Track and Field, Boys and Girls Golf, Girls Softball, and Boys and Girls Ultimate Frisbee. Congratulations to each and every one of you for state-level recognition. We also extend our sincere gratitude to the dedicated staff and supportive family members who play a vital role in these successes. In recognition of their accomplishments, students have received a certificate, bear pen, and letter acknowledging their achievements. Now, please join us in watching a video highlighting their accomplishments. Go Bears! As I believe it's 91 students.
Wow. Congratulations to all the students that were, and all the success they've shown this spring. This takes us to information item C2, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmicek.
Thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board. Over the last couple of weeks, schools throughout the district have celebrated the end of a successful school year and honored students who are moving on to their next chapter. More than 700 White Bear students who completed programs at White Bear Lake Area High School, the Area Learning Center, or the Transition Education Center were celebrated in ceremonies last week. This year marked the beginning of a new 9 through 12 building tradition, as the White Bear Lake Area High School ceremony took place outside the district's first outdoor commencement since 1983. That was the final time White Bear had two high schools, White Bear Lake High School and White Bear Mariner High School, just before the district moved to the split campus of North and South that fall. Thank you to our retirees who represent more than 641 years of service to the district. Later this week, we will honor our retirees in person with a celebratory event. All retirees receive bear awards and certificates to commemorate their time in the district. Thank you for all your service to White Bear Lake Area Schools and to the community. Free summer meals are available for kids and teens age 17 and younger. There is no enrollment and no cost. The healthy meals are based on USDA nutrition guidelines. Additional information is available on the district's website. And district representatives will be back this summer at Market Fest, which runs Thursdays, June 19th through July 31st in downtown White Bear Lake. Stop by the district's booth for pencils, bear paw tattoos, and conversation. New this year is an Orange Out on July 10th, when the district sponsors the event and hosts a White Bear Lake Area School Spirit Night. Fourth Street will be filled with district booths, activities, and a pop-up employment affair opportunity. Please bring your friends and family, wear orange, and join us at 6:30 for the scheduled Orange Out photo. And finally, the district recently received 2025 Awards of Excellence, which is the highest award possible from the National School Public Relations Association for the following Communications Department Publications and Projects, the 2024 Annual Update, the 2425 Calendar, Community E-Newsletter, the Fall 2024 Bears Bulletin, the video series, The Week in 62.4 Seconds, and Building Our Future: Impact on Teaching and Learning Video. So hats off to Tia Quirk and Marissa Vetti for leading these efforts.
All right, thank you. Yep. Okay, that brings us then to discussion item D1, Fiscal Year 2526 Preliminary Budget. Mr. Wald and Ms. Johnson.
Thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek. We were here at the May Work Session, and we reviewed the draft of the preliminary budget for the 2526 school year. At that point, we noted that some of our revenue assumptions were based on our best estimates of what we thought the legislature would, you know, would finally decide on, and that process is still, still in progress. I think their special session today, and I have a feeling it's going to be a long, long day in St. Paul. So tonight, we're gonna move forward on the budget. Just a reminder that state statute calls for school boards to pass a budget before July 1st, and so we need to move forward with this budget proposal, recognizing that some things might change depending on what comes out of legislature tonight. Our budget, this budget cycle, we like to put up whenever we review budgets, recognizing that we are at the final step in that budget process for, or I should say, the first, one of the first steps in the budget process. It's, there's really no beginning and no end to this. We'll get the preliminary budget. We're bringing that to you today, and we'll start right away with the audit of the current school year beginning in October, or excuse me, in July, and that will continue through the fall. We reviewed this in May as well, and it's important, I think, to recognize as you look at the orange dotted line that shows the student formula going back to 2003, and I would say school districts probably weren't flush in 2003, but if we use that as a starting point and just follow the student formula as it relates to the rate of inflation, then you can see that it has lagged, and as we get more, more recent years especially. The budget impact, our buying power, is $13,365,000 less had we, had the student formula kept pace with the rate of inflation over that period of time. Okay, Andy will take it from here.
So, starting off, I'm gonna talk about just broad categories of how our funds are received and then where our funds are spent. So the largest majority of our funding comes from state sources. You can see at the bottom there, 53% of our funds come from the state, and then if you go up to the left, Special Education is state revenue as well. So when we put those two together, 72% of our revenue comes from the state of Minnesota. The next largest pot of money is our property taxes, and our long-term facility maintenance is a form of property tax as well. So when we combine those two, we get to 24% of total revenue from property taxes. So in total, 96% of our money comes from either the state or property taxes. We have very little say in any of the other avenues of our, of our revenue. So how do we spend them? We look at this in two ways. This is based on the objective of the expense. This gets very granular when we report it to the state of Minnesota, but in broad categories, the largest portion of our revenue, of our expenses goes towards salaries and benefits. So you can see there, that amounts to 80% of our total expenses. And then the next largest is purchase services, and that includes both our transportation, our contracted transportation, and our long-term facility maintenance expenses. Those all get grouped into that purchase services category. And then a small amount of money goes towards supplies and materials, and then capital expenditures, and then other, we have dues and some of our, our bonded, our bonded debt that goes through lease levy goes through there as well. So that's how we spend our funds in that category, and then we group it out kind of by department. And so the largest amount of our spending does go towards regular instruction that's over on the right. And then if we loop kind of down into the left, the next several categories all also are attributed to kids in classrooms. So vocational ed, that's the technical MDE category, or career intact we call it. Special education instruction at 22%. Instructional support services, that includes departments like our teaching and learning department, the media, technology, staff development, and then our associate principals. And then pupil support services is also, you know, very connected to our students, and that includes counseling, our health, social workers, and then our school psychs. So then as we loop up, up at the top of the graph, those are the items that are maybe a little bit more on the administrative side. So transportation, we break out, sites and buildings, so like our custodial departments, long-term facility maintenance, small amount of other administration includes like the superintendent, school principals, the school board, and the district support services are largely the departments here at District Center. So the finance office, human resources, communications, et cetera. So as Tim had said, we had assumptions in May, and now we have new assumptions based on what's going to the legislature for approval. We think this is what's gonna happen. I really thought in May that we were gonna know for sure by today, but very don't. So I'm highlighting the changes in the assumptions that have rolled into the budget. First, no change in our enrollment. We are still projecting 8,308 students for next school year, and no change in the formula allowance, so 2.5% increase for next year. Or 2.75, 2.74% increase for next year, and then 2.5% in the following years. The summer term unemployment, we do anticipate that this is gonna be a positive impact to our school budget. Previously, we were projecting that in the second year, that would be an unfunded state mandate, and now it looks like they're gonna continue to fund that through '26, '27, but not in those out years, so stay tuned for that. And then the Paid Family Medical Leave Act, there's no change at the legislature in this area that we're seeing, but as we've been talking about the implementation of that, we think that we need to increase our sub-costs because we know we're gonna have more people out, and we didn't have an associated increase for the substitute expense. So we have increased that in fiscal '27. And then on the Special Education Transportation reimbursement, we had been projecting that we would receive 95% proration in that second year, and actually, what we're going, what we think we're gonna end up realizing is a 90% proration. So there is an extra cost rolled into the budget for that. So then what does that all mean when it's rolled into the total budget? We'll just focus on the preliminary column, 20, the shaded column, 2526. So for revenues for the general fund, we're looking at $146,700,000 of revenue and $147,500,000 of expenses. So a deficit of $267,000. $205,000 of that will roll into our unassigned fund balance. If you recall, that's the fund balance that we tend to focus on. We have a school, school board policy that requires that we maintain an 8% fund balance. So all of that activity rolls in and puts us on that blue line at an ending fund balance of $11,650,000. And that puts us above our fund balance policy at 8.2%. And then when we project forward to '26, '27, total revenue of $151,700,000, expenses $152,000,000, so a deficit of $235,000. The largest amount of that deficit, though, in '26, '27 is a planned decrease in our operating capital. Fund balance, you can see down below, we're spending that down by about $444,000. We're actually seeing just about flat operations in the unassigned fund balance for that year, revenue of about $67,000 going into that. And so the ending fund balance in that year will put us at about $11,700,000, or 7.9%. So not quite at that 8% target. We'll watch that closely as we come up to the revised budget for next school year and then the preliminary budget for the following. And then no changes in either of these three funds. So the other three funds that we bring forward for your approval is the Nutrition Services Fund, the Community Services Fund, and the Debt Service Fund. So again, the Nutrition Services Fund, we're looking at a deficit of $831,000 for next school year. But if you recall, we're just now in the second year of the Free Meals for All, or the Universal Free Meals, and so we don't have really solid data yet. We don't have a full-year projection of revenue for this school year, and so when it was time to build this budget, we took a conservative approach. So we think that it's prudent in this case to do that in the Nutrition Services Fund. We also have some planned one-time spending in the expenses, but we do know that when it comes to the revised budget, it's gonna be a little bit better than that, and then we'll continue to watch and make sure we return to balanced operations going forward. And then in the Community Services Fund, again, in this area, you know, COVID really had a drastic impact on the Community Services Fund. When people don't participate, the revenue goes down, and we weren't able to just shut off expenses because we had people on staff. And so they've been working out a deficit for the last couple of years, but we have a good plan that we're gonna get there. For next school year, we're looking at a total of about $150,000 extra revenue over expenses, and that $115,000 will then really cut that deficit into half at about $115,000 remaining deficit. So by the following school year, we should get to a place where we're back at balanced and a positive fund balance in community ed. And then our Debt Service Fund is again where we essentially pay our mortgage payments. So as a school district, we issue debt to, to pay off all of our improvements in our, in our school construction, and that was, the revenue comes in the form of property taxes, and then the expenses are essentially our mortgage payments come out of there. And so that's set by the Department of Education. We provide to them our debt service schedule, and then they levy 105% of our expenses in the form of property taxes. And then as that fund balance gets a little bit too high, the Department of Education will just hold back a portion so that doesn't continue to build. So in total, about $800,000 extra revenue over expenses for next school year for the Debt Service Fund puts us at 19.6%.
Thank you.
So, any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Scar.
Are we gonna, here's a question on your question. Are we gonna be able to have questions later on? Or for this, for the budget presentation, is?
Do you want to ask it here, or do you want to ask it when it comes up for approval? Theoretically, we can do both.
What would, what would the chair prefer?
Oh, we can do them now while they're here, so.
Okay.
If you have it now.
Well, does anybody else have questions?
I do.
Okay. Well, you can go ahead. I'll wait.
Okay, Ms. Ellison.
Thank you. Again, this is always a very complicated thing, the district budget, so I appreciate all your time. So I'm looking at the, the charts. Where do our funds come from, and how are our funds spent? And so we get just shy of $28 million for special education, but it costs just shy of $33 million for special education. So when things like that happen, it just comes directly out of the general fund.
Correct.
Right? And so where are we this year with special education funding as compared to previous years? Is the gap widening? Is it shrinking?
So this year is, the gap is roughly the same as it was last year. The proration is gonna have an impact. I haven't calculated like the revenue over expense of that. The proration's definitely going to have an impact. One positive thing is legislature did approve an increase to the special across subsidy percentage. So it was previously at 44%, in fiscal '26, '27, it's gonna go up to 50%. So part of that, you know, 95 and 90% proration will come back to us in the form of cross-subsidy aid. You know, it's just like everything in school finance.
What proration means?
Yeah, so what the legislature, what looks like the legislature is going to approve is that instead of having 100% of our special ed transportation costs come back to us in the, in the form of revenue, they're gonna prorate that. So next year, it looks like we're gonna receive 95% of our costs back as revenue, and then the following year, it's gonna go down to 90%. So it continues to exasperate that, that.
Why would they do that?
Deficit. As a cost-saving, as a cost-saving measure. The special ed transportation costs just statewide have increased really, really significantly over the last, you know, number of years. And so it's, I think their hope is that school districts will be able to find a way to cut costs and realize some savings there. I don't know that that will come to much fruition.
Well, I mean, we serve all kids, and so all special ed students who come to this district get service, and so.
Yep, and those costs are really, they're simply driven by IEP needs, and so our hands are tied as far as, you know, once that's in your, your IEP, we have to provide the service.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, and we have great services here. It's just unfortunate that the state doesn't keep up with the costs, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, Mr. Scar.
Thank you. So on the enrollment assumptions, is this, is this the same company, I think, what was it, Teamwork Dynamics? Is that the name of it?
Yeah, Teamworks International.
That was close.
Yes.
Were they the same ones that, when we were doing the referendum, said that we'd be at 10,000 students this year? Is it the same company?
No, we, we didn't, yeah, this enrollment projection is based on numbers that we have. Person, one portion of what we are able to use from them on the annual enrollment projection is live, or is birth rate data. So that's helpful to us to look at, but it doesn't really tell you how many families in their census stayed in the district over the last five years, or have moved, how many have moved in, moved out. So some of that is just working with experience that we've had. But Teamworks International data that you referenced was, there were two demographers who looked at the data at that time. Hazel Reinhardt was a state, retired state demographer, and then Teamworks International.
Okay, thank you.
And they both came up with roughly the same numbers.
So it looks like the, one, one comment that they had was that we're gonna grow market share, but the numbers are flat, so I imagine you're just being conservative on that.
Yeah, it's actually reflects a, improving market share because birth rate, birth rates are lower.
So just one, one thing on, on enrollment, and I don't know if we have stats on this, but it'd be interesting to find out how many people, or how many families or students are coming back to our district that were in private schools or in home, homeschools. That would be a, a good metric to kind of show a trend that, hey, we're bringing people, we're bringing people back, we're getting market share. Just a comment. On the funding versus expenditures, I was looking mostly at cost, not funding, because we have more control over expenses. On administration, we're projected to have an increase of about $300,000, 5.4 from 5.1. District Support Services, about a half a million dollar increase compared to the previous year. Instructional Support Services went from 10.2 to 9.6 to 10. So something must have happened last year. Was there an anomaly there? Do you know? If you don't, if you don't know, that's, that's fine. We can, you can answer it later. The other one was pupil support services went up 200,000. And then when I look at the Nutritional Services Fund with the $800,000 deficit, you're being conservative. What's the up, potential upside on that? I mean, could, could it be zero, or that's, that's not gonna happen?
Repeat that one, because I was still focused on the, the instructional support and pupil support.
Okay, we can just go through, we can go through each one.
Yeah, okay, so that one, it took me a minute, but I, I remember now. What ended up happening is we have some items that we had budgeted in the elementary and secondary instruction. So if you look at that increase from $56,404,000 to $59,292, it's, we have a shift in where expenses are being coded. And I apologize, I look, I remember looking at this really closely last month, and then I haven't refreshed my memory. But that's the, that's what we're seeing as a shift. I think if we would group those two groups together, I think that the, the increase would be, you know, roughly like a 3% increase or something like that. So that's really just a coding shift that we're seeing in those two items.
Okay. Is that the instructional coaches?
Yeah, I, I think it might be how we were coding our instructional coaches, where we had been coding them as instructional, and then partially, then I think we changed it to code them as like teaching and learning. I think that is where, the group of folks that, that we're recoding. And then, okay, and then what was your next one?
The Nutritional Services Fund, you said that you're being conservative. Is there any, is, is the upside zero? Or is it half a million? What's our range of risk there?
I think it's gonna be pretty significant. And I can't commit to a number.
Okay.
On record, but what I will say is, so it was, you know, a couple of months ago that we were working on developing this budget, and at that time then, your revenue is a couple of months old, right? And so it's, it's difficult when you just don't have that full history. Often, we look back at five years of history so we can kind of figure out where we're going, and at that point, we probably had one school year plus maybe three or four months of operations to kind of get a feel for where we're at. And so we are, you know, then intentionally conservative, especially knowing that we can be, based on where our fund balance is in that, in that fund. So I, I won't be surprised if the deficit is half or more. We're also conservative in the staffing, just, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen. We, we, we do see that there might be some decrease actually in state revenue, even that's gonna come forward on there. So the revised budget is conservative, and we know that, and then we built the preliminary budget.
It's a department that's seldom ever fully staffed, and so it's, you know, we budget it as if it were to be fully staffed, and it typically isn't.
Yep, that'll play into it as well.
So on, on the projection, we have a.
Can I add, can I add something to that?
Sure.
Question? So just to Mr. Scar's question about nutrition, nutrition services. So what's changed, for example, from the actual fiscal year '24 compared to now? Has there been anything that's dramatically different statewide or federally? So I would go on record as saying, I, I would, I would, I would bet that it's going to end up being positive, but, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put any money on it if I were you, but I suspect.
What about you?
I suspect, I mean, just knowing, I, I think being conservative in nutrition services is prudent just because the statewide funding of all meals, although the session, it's probably, it's probably not going to change, but there was some question whether that, that was sustainable long-term. Federal funding is sometimes in question, so being conservative there makes sense. Federal funding is sometimes in question. Um, so, being conservative, that makes sense. However, those talking points are very similar from, to a cou, a couple of years ago, and we ended up in the black, fairly health, pretty healthy in the black. We've also, there are some capital expenditures, correct? Can we factor in this time?
Yep, some.
That, that would be one difference from the, from fiscal twenty-four. So, that's, that would be one variable that would be different. So, maybe I take back what I said.
Okay. Last question has to do with, you know, we have a, a deficiency of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand and then two thirty-five. Is there any way that we could reduce costs so that those are at zero? Can you go back and look at that to see if we can reduce the costs so that we're not a deficit? We're at zero?
Um, yeah, probably, you know, and particularly in the projected twenty-six, twenty-seven. Because that, that deficit is really folding into the operating capital fund balance. And part of that is planned. It's intentional. The operating fund, operating capital fund balance at one point three million, it's quite high. It's, it's, I don't remember, thirty percent or forty percent of operations or funding that we receive there. And so, um, we know that, like, there's not a need to maintain a fund balance quite that high in the operating capital. We also have some curriculum purchases that we have to make due to some changes in state standards. And so, that deficit in the, um, operating capital is because of those one-time expenses, those one-time curriculum adoptions. And those needs actually go down in a couple of years, um, as far as curriculum. Those are really large purchases. And so, um, we feel comfortable bringing it forward like this, just because we know that the reduction in operating capital is planned. It's one-time, and going forward, it won't be quite as much of a deficit.
Would you be comfortable if they were at, if it was at zero? So, we didn't have a deficiency?
On that, I, I don't know that I would, actually, on the operating capital, just because we do have that one-time need. So, I think it makes sense for us to bring forward a deficit, um, just knowing we're still in a comfortable place with our operating capital fund balance.
So, is that a no?
Yes, it's a no.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking that you could find two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of cost somewhere to cut, and it'll come out in the wa, in the wash somewhere, right?
Yeah, we could, we could. But it's not, it's not administration's recommendation at this point to bring that forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, hearing none, thank you. We'll have you back up in a few minutes.
We'll just hang out here for a little bit while you do business.
Yeah, what, we got one more.
Yeah.
Uh, the next, we're, we're going to start with our discussion D two. First reading of school board policy six thirteen. This policy has been reviewed by the policy committee. It will come back on July fourteenth. There are a subs, another agenda for the second reading. If you have any questions, can you give us the page number so we can find it in the packet? Yes, Ms. Ellison?
Just one clarifying comment. Um, these are the changes that are made to shift to the trimester.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify. Okay.
Other questions? I just have one question. I haven't, when I looked in there, that is going, that policy is going to be as if I'm a freshman, I'm moving all the way through. So, we're going, we are going to have, if I'm coming as a senior year, it'll adjust to match, but we didn't put it in there. But for the classes that are already on the semester, the, the adjustments will be there, but we don't need it in the policy. All right, that's what I thought, but I was going to ask. Other questions? Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Who came up with the credit requirements on a trimester basis?
Um, well, this, excuse me.
Why don't you, why don't you come up and?
Hi. Um, so, we, we follow the Minnesota Department of Education and their requirements for our standards. And so, there's specific standard graduation requirements for each of those areas, as you can see in the, in the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, this policy will be coming back in July. Thank you. We're going to move on now to our operational items. Operational item E one, action on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget. Mr. Wald and, and Andy Johnson. Um, you've heard the recommendation. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Ms. Ellison, a second?
Second.
By Strife Oji. Any additional questions?
Well, can I just?
Yes, sir. Mr. Scar.
Can I make a, a friendly amendment that they would look for two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of savings and expenses?
Okay, we have a motion to amend it. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Well, I would just say this, that the budget would, if the budget changes, it would need to go to the board again before July first.
So, what is that? You may clarify a question, yes?
What does that mean?
Well, it means that this is our final meeting before the, um, before the end of the month. And by state statute, we have to have a budget approved, um, before July first.
Oh, gotcha. I understand.
So, we don't have to reconvene.
So, at this point, I did not receive a second on that, so that.
So, I'm counting. I'm oh for four. I'm counting.
All right. So, we have in front of us a motion to accept the preliminary budget. Any further discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Arcan?
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
No.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we're going to go on to operational item E two, actions on the workers' compensation agreement for twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Wald.
Thank you, Chair Arcan, members of the board. Yeah, we bring before you tonight, uh, the workers' compensation insurance proposal for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, the proposal is that we, uh, work with, uh, RAS and Dakota Truck Underwriters as we have, um, previous year. In some years, we bring it out for, uh, public bidding, and, um, and we did that last year. So, we're recommending that we stay with RAS. They've actually been our carrier since twenty-fourteen. Uh, they've been great for us to work with. Um, we asked our, uh, broker from Gallagher to work directly with them to negotiate the rates for this year. And so, the rates, um, are before you, five sixty-one, three seventy-five. That's a nine point seven percent increase. It would just note that factors that in, impact, uh, workers' comp, workers' comp rates are payroll expenses, which, um, increase each year. Your rate per payroll, um, uh, we had a five percent increase in that rate. So, from fifty-eight cents per one hundred dollars of payroll up to sixty-one cents, five percent increase there. But over your payroll, it has a, it's a significant number. The experience mod factor, which compares your experience with workers' comp claims in your district compared to others in similar industries. Um, we had one outlier year that really impacted us, and that's on our rates for three more years. That was twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. In, in, but you see that jump in twenty-four, twenty-five. That's the year that the state changed the calculation for mod factor. So, twenty-two, twenty-three was actually our outlier year. But, um, normally, you would see that on twenty-three, twenty-four, but then they changed the calculation, which includes that, makes that year a s, a more significant portion of your mod factor. Um, lost history, market adjustments, uh, play out over time to impact your workers' comp rate. So, the rate for next year, five sixty-one, three seventy-five. The recommendation is that the, uh, board move to accept the renewal quote from Risk Administration Services for workers' compensation insurance effective July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
All right, you've heard the recommendation. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, so moved.
By Ms. Ellison, a second?
Second.
By Daniels. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Scar.
First of all, thanks for your transparency in showing the trend rate on the, on your X mod factor. You know, I worked a lot in, in schools as a contractor, and, you know, usually, they require you to have an X mod of less than one to do work. We're at one point two-five. What kind of, which means we're paying a premium because of our incident rate, safety incident rate. What is our incident rate? Our, our OSHA incident rate? Do you know off the top of your head?
I don't know off the top of my head. I know that typically, our claims come to about two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy, in that range. The outlier year was five hundred and fifty thousand. And so, that is just having this, um, significant impact.
What was the, what was the, uh, nature of the incident?
It was too, uh, I'm not sure what the, what that was. I've looked at that. I just don't recall. Uh, but there were several injuries that year that were significant injuries.
Are we on any kind of probation or anything as a result of having an X mod of one point two-five?
No. No, we believe it's going to improve, and, and our, um, custodial training addresses, that's oftentimes custodial, custodians and nutrition services are oftentimes where you have the most injuries. Um, oftentimes from lifting, um, it can be pinch points in the kitchen. And so, we do training with our staff to try to keep that, not only keep safe, but also keep our mod rate.
What about hands and fingers? Is that a high rate?
No, I, I don't think there's any really big red flags there. It's, um, you know, it can be someone falling as they, um, you know, it just kind of a slip, those types of things.
Who, who is the, who's the safety officer?
Kevin Klecker.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, uh, we'll go ahead. This will be a, a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Arcan?
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Next, we have, uh, operational item C three, action on the property and liability insurance for twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Wald.
Okay, yeah. So, um, yeah, bring, before you tonight, the property and liability insurance. This is actually the twenty-five, twenty-six property and liability insurance. I missed that little detail. But we have it on the bottom here. So, a significant increase in our property and liability insurance for next year. Waper Lake Area Schools is a member of, uh, Insurance Cooperative, the Minnesota Ins- Insurance Scholastic Trust, which has traditionally provided really favorable rates for the school district. In fact, when we went to Mist about a decade ago, our insurance rates dropped significantly, I believe by over fifty percent at that point. But the industry has changed a lot over the last several years, put a lot of pressure on governmental organizations. And that's where the, a lot of significant increase has occurred, is within public, public and governmental, um, entities. So, and things that affect our, in, our, uh, insurance would be our, uh, square footage. So, this year, we, like, this building, for example, we had, uh, Sunrise Park was covered by, um, construction insurance. And so, this square footage of about thirty-five thousand came off the, and construction insurance went into, um, our property and liability insurance. When we bought the high school on, that was a, uh, additional, additional square footage. Um, we added cyber liability insurance, increased that by, our coverage by fifty percent was a twelve thousand dollar increase. Had a huge amount on this, about just a little under two percent of that increases for cyber liability, which we think is probably a pretty wise move, given that, um, governmental organizations, school districts specifically, have become more vulnerable in that world. Outside of district influences on rates is, and probably the most significant influence on rates, is the weather, extreme weather and climate disasters that have occurred, occurred across the country. And even though we haven't seen those so much here, um, the pain, a few years later, starts to be felt more and more as that gets spread out across the country. And so, that's a big part of it. Twenty-seven extreme weather and climate disasters of, uh, of greater than a billion each in the U.S. in twenty-twenty-four. Also, public and the, and governmental market has increased. Part of that is increasing litigation expenses for, um, public and government, governmental organizations. And then, finally, ongoing inflation has had an impact on, on, uh, our property and liability insurance as well. The providers that we have here are, uh, pretty much the, generally the same providers we've had, uh, the last several years. And so, uh, Mist vets them and does the bidding with those providers and feels comfortable bringing them forward. So, all that being said, the recommended action is to, uh, is for the board to move to approve the property and casualty insurance package renewal with the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, thirty-seven dollars, effective July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Twenty-twenty-six, thank you.
All right. So, you've heard the recommended, recommendation. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Strife Oji, a second?
Second.
Second by Ellison. Is there any further discussion or questions? Yes, Mr. Scar?
I would just have one question on the, um, do we have to use the Minne, Minnesota insurance? Is it just called Mist? Do we have to use Mist? Or could we, could we ask Gallagher to take a look at this to say, hey, can you guys do any better than this? Is that likely? Does any other school dis, does every school district in Minnesota use Mist? Or does some use brokers like Gallagher?
Some use brokers like Gallagher, and, um, yeah, we could decide to go out and test the market on this. Gallagher's, or, excuse me, Mist has been really a well-performing organization. And so.
That's how we did it.
It might be worth checking.
Prior to, what's the first year of Mist? Fourteen, fifteen, maybe? Twenty-fourteen, fifteen school year, I think? Prior to that, it was like you're describing, you were, you, we just had a broker that shopped the market for us every year. Mist is a cl, is a group of, I don't know, I don't know the number, twenty-five school districts that have come together to, to do this collectively to get better rates. And it's proven.
That makes sense.
Very well worth it, and so.
And there's an element of self-insurance in it, too, where the first seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over claim is covered by the carrier. And then, there's a self-insurance, um, that picks up about, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand before you go into the excess insurance.
Right.
So, you wouldn't have the benefit of the self-insurance, I guess, when, if you went to the market?
I guess you could probably structure it that way, but it might be a little bit clumsy. But twenty-four point three percent increase, I mean, that's just a tough one to swallow, isn't it? That's two hundred, you know, that's over two hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's about.
We're in the wrong, you know what? We're in the wrong business, right? We're in the wrong business. So, there, you think that's a pretty good number. Have you talked to other school districts as well that are seeing a twenty-four percent increase?
Uh, within the Mist world, uh, we're right in the ballpark. Some are seeing a little more, some are seeing a little less, depending on their district situation.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to go ask the clerk to call the roll.
Arcan?
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now, we're going to go on to operational item E four. This is going to be action on the school board policies seven oh two, seven twenty, seven twenty-nine, and seven thirty-two. These came before the board for the first reading in May. May I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Daniels, a second?
Second.
Second by Strife Oji. Uh, is there any discussion or questions on these policies? And if so, you could please give us the policy number and the page so that we can follow along. Any questions? Hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and just call all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion passes. Now, we're to the board forum. Now, this is a time for board members to share about upcoming things that they'd like to share in the district. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? Yes. Ms. Strife Oji?
So, I attended, um, an event a couple of weeks ago on celebrating teachers and educators. It's called Elevate Teaching, really about elevating the profession of teaching and all of the good things. and all of the good things that go with that profession, lifting teachers up at a time when they may not feel as supported. So I highly recommend that as they do their work, it started here in Minnesota by a Roseville school board member. So while I was there, I did come across this Kids in Need Foundation. It's an organization that partners with teachers working in underserved schools where fifty percent or more of the student population qualifies for free reduced lunch to ensure students are prepared to learn in the classroom. And they provide, it's a teacher resource center located right here in Little Canada, where they serve educators, helping to create an equitable learning environment. They allow teachers to come and shop for supplies and information. I will pass the information on to Rachel to share out with schools.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Daniels.
Well, I wanted to thank all of our teachers for a great year and families and students and congratulate all of our seniors who are moving on and congratulate our retirees for all of their fine work and the years of service they've given our district. And I wanted to mention too, with all the graduations, I wanted to mention the nine sixteen Northeast Metro District. I went to several of their graduations last week. We have students that were placed or have graduated from some of their programs. And those are just outstanding ceremonies and I want to congratulate those students as well, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Scar?
I just want, want a couple of things. One, on the graduation event, I mean, you took a risk having it outside with all of those folks and it really paid off. It was really a nice event and a memorable event, I think, for the families and the students, so that was well done. We have our... Pardon me?
It's a good thing it wasn't planned for Tuesday, I guess.
So the other thing was, we have our Education Foundation Golf Event on June sixteenth. If any of the staff or board members are playing golf behind me, please don't hit into me. And then the summer meals program, I just had one question, do we, what do we do to communicate that that's available to the community?
Uh, I can take a stab at it, but principals probably right, that communicate out to the families.
Do we put something in the local press?
Yeah, there's something in the...
Yeah, and the, the community news letter and the different ways that we share out as a district as well.
We're set, we're set throughout the district.
So it's...
That's great, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Daniels?
Just being out on the field and looking at the beautiful high school for graduation, many of us have lived in the district for a long time. We've been here since eighty-one and in eighty-three, when our first son was born, that's when the school split up. And, um, and it was gonna be temporary, of course, and it took a long time for us to have this vision and it came to fruition and it was so beautiful and so wonderful. I'm just so grateful to the community for the support and the staff and everyone that put together that ceremony because the speeches were wonderful, the weather was very positive. And Wayne told me he put his order in for next year already for the weather, which is great, so...
Temporary means forty-one years in White Bear.
Anyway, it was great. It was like a dream come true for people that have been in the community for a long time and, and worked to have it happen. And just wanna say thank you to everyone.
Any else?
I just wanna say that I love the graduation. It brought me back to when we graduated, I was one of them that graduated out on Price Field. It was nice to see back outside. I liked the opportunity too, that the end of graduation, that siblings and parents could come down, the pictures and the smiles that came down on the field. We never, we didn't, you know, at Aldridge, we went out and they kinda had to find them. They had an opportunity to come walk right down and I think families were really excited about that. So we hit out of the park. Yes?
Sorry, I did think of something. I think the other benefit to being in the stadium is that you can have more than four people from your families. You know, I think if all the grandparents and aunts and uncles and family members that I saw there, that wouldn't have been possible at Aldridge.
Yeah.
So that was a gift as well. And then kids can just run around, 'cause kids get antsy, that's a long ceremony for littles. And so there just were so many beautiful things about it, so, thank you.
I believe we went from thirty-three hundred to fifty-five hundred, so it was about a two thousand percent gain. So that was nice, so congratulations to all the, all the graduating seniors and we set a high bar for next year, so.
All right, we are now at the adjournment section, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Scar, can I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Ellison, all right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.